Good evening and welcome to the Candidates Forum for Santa Clara County Supervisor District 1. I'm Julia O'Keefe, a member of the League of Women Voters of San Jose, Santa Clara. This forum is produced by our league as a public service. The League of Women Voters was founded in 1920 when women finally obtained the right to vote. We are a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization of women and men, established to promote informed and active participation in government. We encourage our members and the public to vote, to pay attention to actions of government bodies like the Board of Supervisors, and to run for political office. The League never supports nor opposes any candidate or political party. We actually divide our work into two distinct parts. Voter Service, which is what we're doing tonight by offering a chance to watch and listen to candidates answer some questions. The second part is advocacy. While we never say to vote for or against a candidate, we do study and evaluate legislation and ballot measures. And sometimes with consensus of our membership, we take a stand on those ballot measures or the legislation. The League is a strong grassroots organization. Our members are members not only of the local league, but also members of the League of Women Voters of the Bay Area, of California, and of the US. There are five... I think we're losing our slideshow. But there are five leagues in Santa Clara County, each supporting specific cities or towns. My guess is all of it, many of you are members of San Jose or Santa Clara, but we also include the cities of Milpitas, Morgan Hill, and Gilroy. And we welcome some members from that area. So if you are interested in joining, you can go online to L W V S J S C dot org to find us and join online, or you can also print a form to fill out and mail to us. In our voter service function, we hold Candidates Forums like tonight. In the upcoming November election, there are seven state propositions, and we're in the process of presenting a balanced and fair analysis of some of those measures to help you decide what you think about them. We also do voter registration. Maybe some of you have run into our members at the farmer's market, or the library, or even maybe some health facilities. But very importantly, we work hard to produce a website called Voters Edge. Voters Edge makes getting voting information very easy for you. Just enter your street address and your zip code, and you'll get a list of all the contests on your ballot. Our Voter Edge volunteers are now contacting candidates and asking them to fill out information about themselves and their candidacy. So you can easily see their top priorities, their experience, and information about their policy preferences. What will they do if they are elected? Before we get started, I would just like to note some important dates. Election Day is November 8th. You might have received your voter information guide, you probably have, but if you haven't, it will be coming soon. Then our county registrar of voters will be sending out paper ballots to all registered voters on October 10th. Once you get your ballot and you fill it out, you have lots of options. You can put it in its envelope that comes with it and just drop it in the mail to return it. Or you can send it to, drop it in a drop box, which is specifically for ballots near you. Or you can take it after October 29th. You can take it to a vote center. You can also use an interactive lookup, S C C Vote dot org, to find drop boxes and vote centers that are near you. You can check if you're registered to vote on that, that S C C Vote dot org. And after you've dropped your ballot, you can track its path through the county process. So you know that it was received, and you know when it gets counted. Now, if we can get the maps again, the slideshow is acting up. But I was interested to see how the boundaries of District 1 have changed this year after redistricting. So if there is that slide available, we can see the 2010 District 1 and the 2020, the new redistricted District 1. If you have any doubt about what district you're in, there we go. If you have any doubt about which district you are in now, that is another item you can ask at S C C Vote dot org. You can go there to find your supervisory district. And now, without any further ado, I'd like to turn the meeting over to our moderator for tonight, who is a longtime member of the League, Mary Ann Hagerity. Mary Ann?
Okay, thank you, Julia. Before I introduce tonight's candidates and give an overview of the structure of this forum, I'd like to summarize a few of the rules that all the candidates have agreed to abide by this evening. In order to make sure that all candidates have a fair chance to speak to you, we always keep track of the time that each candidate has to speak. Tonight, each candidate will have normally one minute to speak. A candidate does not have to use all the time allotted and may finish the sentence when the time is up. I will enforce the time limits, and you will see the timer show a warning sign as time is running out and a stop sign when time is up. And now, I'd like to introduce our candidates. Sylvia Arenas and Johnny Camus. Please join me on camera. The format for tonight's forum will be as follows. Each candidate will make a one-minute opening statement. Next, the candidates will respond to the questions submitted in advance. Each candidate will direct, have a chance to answer this question. They will have one rebuttal opportunity and will have 30 seconds to rebut a comment made by another candidate during the question and answer period. All right, following the questions, you will have a one-minute closing statement. Okay, so let's begin. And I'm going to start with Sylvia Arenas, and you'll have one minute to make an opening statement.
Great, and thank you, everyone. Good evening. Really honored to be a part of this forum tonight. Thank you for the League for hosting and all of you at home for welcoming us into your space. I'm Sylvia Arenas, I'm a council member in my sixth year, and I've really kept a laser focus on the needs of family and children in our community. I take my position as an elected member as a privilege. And it's really allowing me to do something for our families. And when we don't, it keeps me up at night, but it also keeps me laser focused. If I have the opportunity to serve on the Board of Supervisors, I'm going to bring that same urgency, very laser focused, and I'm not going to accept a status quo. And I'll treat this opportunity as what it really is, and that's to make a difference in our community.
Thank you, Sylvia. And now, Johnny, this, Mr. Camus, sorry, the same question to you.
Well, thank you for having me. Many people don't know, but I'm a refugee from the war in Beirut, Lebanon. As a child, I struggled to learn a new language when I first came here, and we faced discrimination, especially at school. My family lived in subsidized housing, and I worked my way through Safeway and paying my way through colleges at San Jose State University and earned a business degree. Later on, I started my own business as a financial advisor and worked there for 20 years. I only got into politics to use my skills to make government run more efficiently and more effectively. As a council member, I helped save millions of dollars, taxpayer dollars. I helped to increase the number of police officers, and I took care of my district. I'm running as a supervisor because I have a plan to reduce homelessness. I have a plan to reduce crime, and I have a plan to get results. That's why I'm endorsed by many people of all political parties, like Mike Wasserman and Sam Liccardo. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Camus. I'm going to give you the first question. So why do you want to be a county supervisor?
Well, quite frankly, I'm frustrated with the status quo. I'm so sick and tired of having the same solutions to address homelessness and crime and watching the rise in crime and homelessness over the last 15 years. You know, I want, I'm running because I have new ideas. I have new ideas on addressing homelessness that addresses the root causes, like mental health and drug addiction. I want more inpatient, inpatient medical and drug addiction facilities. I want to implement the new care court laws that have been just handed down by the states. I want to make sure that we're managing our money more wisely. I think we are one of the highest taxed areas in the world, and we can't seem to make ends meet and get people into situations where they're off the streets. And I also don't want to see the rise in crime anymore. I think that the criminal element, the pendulum of justice has swung too far to the side of the criminal, and I have new ideas on that.
Thank you. Right, Ms. Arenas, so why would, why do you want to be a county supervisor?
Sure, I've had more than 26 years of public service. This has always been my path in this, to make sure that my community has what it needs. Obviously, we are in a trap where we know that there is a lot of need and not enough to go around, especially in housing. I do think that there's partners and really good work that's happening in the county. We need to continue to move that forward. I think that saving a penny now, in the same way that maybe the Reagan administration did that and took away our mental health institutions, well, now we're paying, I don't even know, I can't even say double, triple. So it's not about saving money, but about saving lives and making sure that we invest in our community and making sure that our crime, the mental health system, children and families are able to stay in San Jose.
Thank you. So I'm going to go to you, Ms. Arenas, with the next question. The boundaries of District 1 have changed with redistricting. What makes you feel qualified to represent the communities affected?
Sure, I look at this district much like I look at my district. It's one of the largest districts in the city of San Jose. And our boundaries haven't changed very much because we don't have a lot of density. And I think that's true for Morgan Hill as well as Gilroy. And there's potential for development. And I think that this is when folks start to take a look at what they'd like to see and how their community is going to change. And those considerations are part of this conversation. I think that I can accommodate that and facilitate those conversations because I've done them before. I've led on a measure against converting industrial land into housing, and so we don't have urban sprawl. And I think these are the kinds of issues that South County is also facing. So I have experience with that, and I also have experience in making sure that our community voices are always heard.
Thank you. Mr. Camus, why, what makes you qualify to represent this affect, the communities affected in District 1?
Well, I could tell you that I used to be the council member for District 10, which is one of the more rural areas of San Jose. And through this redistricting, well, I think it was, you know, I, we picked up other parts of San Jose, but I feel I'm very qualified because I have reached out to South County for many years. I've actually worked with South County leaders on issues that they are, that are important to them. You know, I've worked with many people that have actually endorsed me. You know, three quarters of the city council in Gilroy and, and two council members in Morgan Hill. All the past mayors know that I've worked with them before and brought money for transportation dollars to them when I was on BTA. I worked with them on, I worked on a project to secure South County Coyote Valley from being developed. And I've also worked on the San Teresa foothills to make sure that we lock up that area and make a path for the citizens there. I worked with the Open Space Authority to get money to incorporate that into a new park. And so I have the, you know, proven record working with South County.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Camus, what, what do you feel are the major challenges facing District 1 today?
Well, there are several challenges, transportation, homelessness, the rise in crime. Those are all issues that I hear about. I know that there's a lot of other issues that are unique to South County, like farming. I've been listening to the wine growers and the cattlemen and the, and the farmers, and they are very, very unhappy with the way that the South County is being treated, quite frankly, by county leadership. They often get neglected. There's not enough money going to fire protection, for example. So besides homelessness, besides the rising crime, they also have to deal with, you know, fire. They also have to deal with the lack of water to water their crops. The bureaucracy in providing housing units for farm workers. There's a lot of issues that are unique to South County that I'm uniquely qualified because I've been in South County listening to these people for the last two years. This is, this was not, you know, over the last two years of campaigning and, and longer.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Arenas, what do you feel are the major challenges facing District 1?
There's a lot of similarities in terms of what we are facing as a city, but because they have some special features in South County, I'll talk about those a little bit later. But really, it's homelessness, it's housing, it's development. It's how are we going to deal with all of these three things in a way that is compassionate as well as solves the problem, right? And there's some natural tension there with neighbors, and we have to figure out what are, what do our neighbors want and ensure that those things that they desire in their community are there. There's also issues around agriculture and water, things that maybe some folks over in my district might not be thinking about. But there is a lot of folks who aren't connected to city services, to water services, and that's very similar to some of my areas in District 8.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Arenas, again to you. How, how will you work with other supervisors in balancing the challenges of District 1 with the rest of the county?
I'm very focused on collaboration. And like I just mentioned in my previous response, our communities aren't very different. We're more similar than, than we're not, right? And I think that that creates partnerships and collaboration for those very specific issues that we're all facing, like homelessness, like housing, like transportation. Except that we need to tailor some things slightly different. In South County, the transportation or the access to Caltrain is very limited. The bus lines are very limited. And so that those things need to be, first of all, voiced and advocated for by their supervisor, which I hope voters will choose me in the end. But really, it's about having these conversations, open lines of communication, and making sure that we're all working towards similar goals.
Thank you. And Mr. Camus, the same to you. How will you work with the other supervisors to solve the issues of both District 1 and the whole county?
Well, you know, I have been working on ideas for many years. In fact, I've worked with my colleagues, I worked with Raul Peralas on a memo to push for Laura's Law, which is the temporary conservatorship law that just passed, basically after 19 years of not being implemented at the county. So I've worked with him on crafting memos on homelessness. And so I have, you know, I will invite my colleagues to get to know my district. I'll take them down to the winery so that they can understand the needs of Morgan Hill and Gilroy and San Martin. I, you know, and then I will go visit their districts and find out what their needs are. So it's important to have these dialogues. It's important to have, to show up and learn about the other portions of the county that you don't know so that you can understand the perspectives of your colleagues. As I have in, as a council member, I actually went out to lunch with many of my colleagues on a regular basis and invited staff to work together so that we can work on ideas across, you know, all these boundaries.
Hey, thank you. All right, again to Mr. Camus. The supervisors passed an $11.5 billion budget for 2022-23. Are you satisfied with the current budget process? If not, how would you change it?
Well, I could tell you that looking at the budget, it's giant and unwieldy. I think it's very important to have accountability. And there's a lot of programs that are, you know, that there's literally hundreds of departments at the county. It's so tough to read it. Even with, with a finance degree, I found it hard to read. I can't imagine a citizen, you know, making their way through those documents. I literally have a book in my hands, the budget book. So yeah, we need to simplify. You know, I think the county is being stretched in many, many different directions, and they're neglecting the root, the root things that they, that are supposed to be doing. Homelessness, you know, the safety net of the community, public safety. That is what's the most important thing, and I will focus our budget accordingly. Last year alone, we did not spend 100, according to Otto Lee and Susan Ellenberg, we didn't spend 102 million on mental health. What's going on with that?
Hey, thank you. All right, and Ms. Arenas, the same question. The $11.5 billion budget. Are you satisfied with the current budget process? If not, how would you change it?
Well, I think one of the differences between the county and the city is that the city of San Jose has a priority setting process that allows for us to be focused on a number of issue areas. And all of us council members, we vote to prioritize those. Anybody can submit those, can submit areas of concern, and then we make sure that we prioritize. I don't think the same thing is happening on the county side. I know that the same thing isn't happening on the county side, and I think that's really important. One, because we need to be strategic. And two, because even if we do have the money, we may not have the personnel to carry out the really good work that we have. And so we have to make sure that we prioritize what's more important in a strategic plan will allow for us to do that. I currently have that for my own office. I carry a strategic plan to make sure that we complete the things that are important to my community and to our office.
Thank you. Okay, next question from Ms. Arenas. The Board of Supervisors voted on the building of a new jail. That vote was very close. The county exec now recommends it go back to bid. What are your thoughts?
You know, we have to find a way to move both our system further towards treatment and at the same time, allow for our jail to be a safe place for those who are incarcerated and those who work there. And so as I take a look at what the board is doing, they're doing, they're taking a moment to actually take stock of where they're going to head before they actually put all of this money into only the jail system. And so I think that's a smart moment or move to make. We do have to figure out how to balance both of these things. And I know that there's a lot of mental health advocates wanting to make sure that we have a lot of investment in that system. And I don't think that it needs to get pitted. I think that we need, we can do both of these areas, and we need to make sure that we streamline development so that some of the basic things for infrastructure are there.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Camus, the Board of Supervisors vote on the building of a new jail was very close. Now, the exec wants to recommend it go back for bid. What are your thoughts?
Well, I literally wrote an op-ed in the Sensi-McRed News on this that was published a couple of days ago. So if you want a detailed analysis, it's there. But I cannot believe that we're pushing this up one more time. This project was approved back in 2014 and was mandated by the state of California because of the living conditions that our people who are incarcerated are living in, the dilapidated jails. So this, this, this thing was approved 14 years ago and funded with $80 million by the state of California to improve the living conditions. It had 200 mental health beds, 200. And it included an entire floor to help people gain skills, to gain skills so that they can, so that when they're out, they can have a better reintegration. And I don't understand why they're going out again. It's no wonder that nobody wants to bid on our projects. Nobody can ever find out when the heck they're actually going to get, start paying. And unless we start, stop procrastinating and start building, we're never going to get people to bid on our projects. So I would, you know, terrible.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, Mr. Camus, again, what is your opinion of the draft E I R for the Sergeant Ranch Quarry? And have you formulated a position?
Well, I, I, I'm leaning against it because I think it's going to have a heavy impact on the environment in the area. I haven't studied it completely, but so far, then, you know, the environmental impact reports are very, very large. So I read the first few pages, and so far, I don't like what I see. Most likely would vote against it at this point.
Okay. Ms. Arenas, have you formulated a position on the Sergeant Ranch Quarry project?
Well, first of all, before I even talk about the environmental impacts, I think that there's also impacts to the Amamatsu travel ban. And, you know, this is the heart of their ancestral land, and we must acknowledge that first and foremost. It is also a, an area where a lot of wildlife has movement between mountain ranges, east and to the south. And so I think that it is value, it has a value to the Amamatsu tribe as well as to our local wildlife. But there's, there's some concerns about the quarry that I have in addition to the wildlife corridor and the impacts to groundwater due to the, I think it's an anticipated pumping of 86 gallons daily and impacts from hundreds of truck trips. So at this point, I'm, I'm very leery.
Thank you. I'm going to go back to you, Ms. Arenas. Given the scant, the scarce resources in the county, how would you approach balancing the county budget?
Well, there is a... That is a big question. I think, you know, one of the things that we don't think about when we are doing budget is some of the systems that we rely on to carry out the daily work. And that's a lot of the contracts that we have with the nonprofits. Those nonprofits right now are really struggling, not only with budget themselves, but with workforce development. And even though we're not responsible for that or the county is not responsible for that, it still shows up in the lack of service for our communities. And so I think one of the things that I would include or focus more is how to increase the capacity of those folks who are assisting and supporting us. I also think that there's a lot of really great ways to audit and to ask for accountability within the budgets. I've done that myself in, in the city. And so I think that there's, there's some, some tools already available.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Camus, the large question to you. How would you approach balancing the county budget, given our scarce resources?
Well, you know, the budget does get balanced every year, and I don't know that it's scarce. It's $11.5 billion. And, and as I, and as I said, we had $102 million extra for mental health services that we could have spent that we may not get this next year from the state because we're not spending that money. In fact, the county's mental health services audit actually is going to be my map to creating some more accountability. Um, in fact, the county's uh mental health services audit actually is is going to be my map to to creating some more accountability. I literally got some of my ideas off that audit. One of them was to create an oversight position uh that oversees the money being sent to vendors. Because there's no oversight, there's no coordinations of efforts, there's very little in um. Accountability that's being done. We need to make sure that if we're spending money on helping people who are homeless. Those homeless people are actually getting services that are getting them off the streets. So creating an oversight position is one of my top goals in my plan.
Thank you. I'm going to go back to you and this is of kind of a follow up to that. So, uh, Mr. Camus, what county programs and services should be given the highest priority within the budget?
You know, homelessness, 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 you know, if it's a crisis, you can't, you know, if the county is calling it a crisis and we're not treating it like a crisis. Um, we need, we need to act, you know, there are so many ideas that were in the audits that I read that that, you know, they haven't implemented. The fact that, the fact of the matter is there there are people who are mentally ill and drug addicted, the majority of the people who are. You know, basically uh on the streets according to the records here are mentally ill or drug addicted. And if we're not creating. Uh, mental health beds and hiring more uh people who are in that industry, we're never going to solve our problems. Right now, we're actually outsourcing. Most of our mental health beds. We only have a couple of hundred beds in the whole county. And the county's had many years to actually increase the capacity. I want to get some results and that's that's one of the things that frustrates me the most. We've known about the rise in homelessness. Why haven't we created more mental health and drug addiction beds?
Thank you. Okay, to you, Ms. Arenas. What county programs and services should be given the highest priority within the budget?
Well, I think currently um the majority of the budget is under the health and hospitals and um. We need to make sure that we keep our community safe and we keep them healthy. Within that, there's also human services. But like, because if you're not feeling well or you're malnourished, um, you're just not going to excel in school, you're not going to do well at your job. And so. Um, the county really represents that safety net that when people get in trouble, there's somebody there to really hold them up. And um, the human services piece, an aspect of. Of the safety net is something that I would absolutely focus on. It's this the source of and the origin of a lot of the social issues that we have. Um, and helping, helping our communities continue to um traverse through some of these very difficult times. Is absolutely important. This recovery is not only just economic, but it's social and emotional.
Thank you. Thank you. And and to you, uh, Mr. Camus. Um. Uh, let's see, um. Did what programs? Oh, we already discussed that. So, right, we're on to the next question. Um, and I'm going to go back to Ms. Arenas for this. All right, Ms. Arenas, how would you uh plan to involve residents in the decision-making process of the county?
I think in the same way that I um do currently involve our community. Um, I'm very proud to say that I turned a couple of projects around that were a little bit in trouble when I first came on board. And that's um listening to what our community has to say in a way that honors their input. Um, allows them to understand um where their feedback is going to get. Um. How the process um is going to use their feedback to inform ultimately the decisions that we make. And so one of the things I'm really proud of is that we. Doubled our neighborhood association so that we could make sure that we had not only. Um, neighbors that organize and keep each other safe, but that also are able to receive some of this information and we are also able to provide the information to them. Um, and so I think that's one of the things that we have forgotten how to do in our city because we are so busy is to talk to our neighbors.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Camus, how would you plan to involve residents in the decision-making process of our county?
Well, I could tell you that as a council member, I I prided myself on making sure that we had two newsletters going out every month. And we discussed topics that uh that were going to be on the agenda to to talk about before we voted on them. A lot of people actually. You know, sent out newsletters saying, hey, here's what I voted on. I I used to send out letters. Saying here's what we're going to vote on. And there's a big difference with that. Um, I also used to host uh meetings in various parts of my district twice a month and I can, I will continue that effort at least one. Uh, once in the south, once in the north part of the district. It's a massive district, so we need to make sure that people are being heard. Um, and lastly, in the areas that I think that need more work, like we had a half, the Hafen-Viamonte area, which is still in the district. I worked very hard to 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 reduce crime out there. I I had a team out there. Of to try to empower that community. And uh, we got it away from being a gang hotspot, you know, before I left office.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, the next question to Mr. Camus. Um, there are three major cities in District One. In what way will you collaborate with those cities, um, especially with the largest city, San Jose, to achieve the county's goals?
Well, we've we've had a a a longstanding relationship of as a council uh with collaborating with the county on its goals. We've actually helped. Uh, with with the um, the food, senior citizen food program with wifi networks for at-risk youth. And I intend to actually uh try to recreate some of these programs with some of the other cities that that don't have advantage of of uh. The big city muscles that we used to have. Um, there are great ideas that came out of uh Mayor Sam Liccardo, working with, you know, telecom companies to provide free tablets and and wifi services. Those are the things that are very much needed in Gilroy and 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 Morgan Hill. And and so I would definitely use some of the experiences that we've had in the big city. To bring it down to Morgan Hill and other places that can use some of those big ideas. Um, so I I will definitely uh also collabor- collaborate on transportation issues and make sure that the South County is being served financially with some of their needs.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Arenas. And what ways will you collaborate with this uh three cities located in our county? Um, to achieve the best goals for the county uh and District One?
Sure, I think it's the, there's always a a really simple formula and that's building relationships, right? It's making sure that you communicate with one another in terms of priorities, learning to be strategic with one another. Um, and to figure out where you have some common goals that you can both. Um, or all three cities can pursue. And so I think that I would look at a regional group and having a regional working group to figure out. How we can leverage each other's resources and and make a lot of efforts in those specific areas that are concerned to everyone. Um, I currently have joint meetings already with the county. Um, around uh child well-being and sexual assault. I've been doing that um for the very first time. We've uh put committees together so that we can have um emotion and follow-up. Uh, through our administration. And so there's also a lot of policies that uh paths that we can find.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Camus, um. Uh. See, I I'm going to go to the next question with you. Um, the nature of uh political interaction has become more negative in recent years. How would you improve the situation during your campaign and while in office?
Well, I could tell you when I was in council and I think Sylvia can attest to this, I I I tried to reach out and have meals with some of my colleagues. Um, and and try to, oh, you know, I I've I've written memos with Sergio Jimenez and Raul Peralas and Don Rocha. Um, so I I I have a very, very. So I. I hate partisan politics. I cannot stand it and and it's getting more and more politics. I got into politics because I want to solve problems. And as long as we're all working on solving problems, I'm not going to have po- problems with my colleagues. And in this campaign, I'm going to be focused on issues, issues, you know, fiscal responsibility, accountability. These are the issues that we're going to be focused on. And to the extent, um, I'm, you know, we we will uh be working with the, you know, supervisors on on issues, on. Those things that are important to me. I think I think that they will be important to all the other supervisors as well. So I'm hoping to work with them.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Arenas. Um, the nature of political interaction has become more negative in recent years. How would you improve? The situation while in office?
You know, this ties back to the last couple of questions that we've answered and it really is about getting to know one another and building relationships. Um, we've been a a little too accustomed to driving into our, um. Although I don't do that because my garage is really busy with stuff. But usually there's folks who just go into the garage and, you know, never really get to say hi to their neighbors. Um. We need to make sure that we change that. And the pandemic didn't, certainly didn't help us because it isolated us even further. So we need to reestablish relationships and ensure that we collaborate. Um, half of, half of that effort is just relationship building. There's a lot of common issues, no matter what side it it is. It's how we we come up with those solutions that is important. And I think having a clear line of communication is is the first step.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to give you an open-ended question here. Um, what question haven't I asked you that you wish that I would have asked? I'll give you a chance to talk about an issue that we haven't asked you about. Okay, uh, Ms. Arenas, would you like to go first?
I I'd like to go second. That was the question.
Okay, what what haven't I asked, what haven't? Okay, so what haven't I asked you about that you would like to speak about?
Uh, sure. Listen, I I think some of the, some of the issues that. Uh, that the city of San Jose deals with that are part of this safety net that we don't really talk about because we talk about parks and streets and. And infrastructure and things of that sort. But there's a lot of work that's being done around homelessness and shifting. Those needs to children and families. And I think, you know, um, as a mother of two, I know how important it is to bring that perspective. I think as a woman, I also bring that perspective. And and creative priorities because of that. And now our our housing department actually um focuses on families, not only in our shelters, but in our development. And and includes childcare in in how they're going to grow their community. And so I think. Keeping those things in mind is really important, being that women are the, one of the most displaced workers. Um. Because of the pandemic. And so we have to make sure that we we support everyone.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Camus, what haven't I asked you that you would like to speak about?
Well, crime, quite frankly, uh, the the, how do you reduce crime? And, you know, with all the state laws that have have gone down. Uh, to to make us less safe like Prop forty-seven fifty-seven. Um, some of the only methods that we have is in the county is to make sure that uh people who are in the incarceration system are trained. And that was, that was part of that new jail, having an entire floor to train people while they're in jail. Right now, people are getting trained um through the reintegration services after they get out of jail. And, you know, and that's all voluntary. Quite frankly. I think it's it's a disservice to the people who are being incarcerated. We need to train them with skills before they leave jail so that they can actually. Have better, a better chance to reintegrate with society and hopefully not recidivize, basically come back to doing the same thing that got them into jail to begin with. We need to, as county leaders, we need to make sure that. Our uh incarcerated actually get skills and uh so that they can be marketable.
Thank you. Well, we've asked you several questions this evening. And um now we'd like to wrap it up with a closing statement. So um, when you're ready, um, I'll have Mr. Camus go first and then Ms. Arenas, okay?
Yeah, I want to, basically, I want to first uh thank you guys for having uh this exchange of ideas and dialogue. You know, I've been a leader in the city of San Jose uh on fiscal responsibility. I've been a leader for improving public safety. And I've been a leader that has fought for results at the city level. We cannot continue doing the same thing. And moving forward with the same ideas and expect different results. On very important issues. Like mental, like mental health, drug addiction, crime, homelessness. I will push for fact-based solutions on homelessness that address the root causes, like mental health and drug addiction. And the broken rehabilitation system. I'll push for new ideas on reducing crime. I have the experience and I have new ideas. I have the drive. And I would like to ask all of you to support my effort to become your next supervisor for County District One. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Camus. Okay, um, Ms. Arenas. Um, a closing statement from you.
Thank you. And thank you for having me today. Really, I hope that my message got through and that is. That we need to make sure that we invest in our communities. If we want different results, we need investments and we need a smart investments. Um. For example, Santa Clara County women and girls are living through just a crisis of gender violence and it happens during pandemics. It's worldwide. It's not just here in San Jose. And it's just now coming into focus um from, you know, domestic violence to sexual assault to human trafficking, the numbers and impact are just. If you sell them, they're staggering. And the most heartbreaking thing is that most of those sexual assaults. Are young girls under the age of thirteen. And so I've been leading a coordinated response. Um, with the jo- with joint meetings at the county and that's led to a lot of results. Um, and improved policies and practice and staffing levels. This is how you create change. This is how you create. Different, a different way of dealing and interacting with our community. That's what you can expect.
Well, thank you both so much. Um, right now I'm going to turn um the meeting to our host, Julia O'Keefe. To finish out the evening.
Thanks, Mary Ann. We'd like to remind you before we go that uh our league and others in the county are producing more forums. Go to our website at L W V S J S C dot org or to Voters Edge for more information on voting. And to register for the Zoom candidate forums. You can even submit your questions in advance. This concludes our forum tonight. I'd like to thank the candidates for sharing their time and their ideas. And participating in the forum. And I'd also like to thank all the volunteers whose energy has gone into making this forum possible. We produce these forums because we believe that a democratic government depends on the informed and active participation of citizens. We hope. That the insights you've gained tonight from this forum will help you making your decision on your ballot. For more information, go to votersedge.org. And uh you can find information there on candidates and also on ballot measures. And above all, remember democracy is not a spectator sport. Please vote on November eighth. Make our democracy work. Thank you and good evening.
Good evening.